I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
May we have a roll call please?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that the absent council members be excused.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that the absent council members be excused. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First thing on the agenda is a very special presentation, Chief Peterson.
Members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. Mark Peterson, Fire Chief. Tonight, we are celebrating a special occasion for four members of our department. One of them is not here tonight, Battalion Chief Tally Hall, retired as of March 1st, 2014, after serving the city for 38 years. Tally joined the Renton Fire Department on August 6th, 1975, and he has served in numerous capacities, from fire prevention, to training, to response operations. Tally left a legacy of providing some of the best service and expecting his crew members to provide some of the best services to the community. So for that, I'd like to congratulate Tally Hall. But with Tally's retirement comes opportunities for three other folks, and the way this works, because Tally was a battalion chief, we have to fill up in these positions. So, captain becomes a battalion chief, lieutenant becomes a captain, and then a firefighter becomes a lieutenant. So it's a stair-step approach. So really, you get four people, as we fill Tally's position with a new hire also, that have an opportunity to serve the city. But I'd like to call firefighter Jim Oaks forward tonight. Jim is being promoted to lieutenant. Jim joined the department on October 1st, 1991, and he serves on our special teams. He's right currently on the dive team, but he's been on the hazmat team and the rope team. And he also teaches building construction. One of the things in the fire service that's really a challenge for us today is how these buildings are built, and how they put 'em together, and how they fall down when certain things happen. And Jim really has a keen sense of building construction and how that works. Jim will be assigned to Engine 11 on C shift, and pinning Jim's badge tonight will be his wife, Maria. Maria? The reason I said that is that Maria and all the wives of the promoted individuals tonight, they sacrifice a lot, especially when it comes to... Go ahead, stand right there. There you go. So, especially at the lieutenant level, there's hours and hours and hours of studying, and usually sometimes the family ends up getting put on the back burner for a little bit while these folks prepare for the promotional opportunities. So, they deserve our utmost applause also for the sacrifices they make. Lieutenant Craig Soucy, would you step forward please?
Thank you.
Craig Soucy is being promoted to captain tonight. Craig joined the department on August 1st, 1993. He was promoted to lieutenant on January 16th, 2008. Craig has served the department and the city in many different ways. As a past president of the firefighters locally at 64, he has paved the way for a strong labor management relationship. He's also developed relationships with a lot of our policymakers down in Olympia and helped come to some pretty good legislation that's come through Olympia through his efforts. Craig will be assigned to Engine 17 in the Fairwood area on C shift, and pinning Craig's badge tonight is his wife, Melody. Captain Kevin Anderson is being promoted to battalion chief safety officer. He began his career in Fire District 40 on May 1st, 1986. He came to us in March 2006 as a part of the contract with Fire District 40. He was promoted to captain on July 16th, 2010, and served as the department's training captain, and he's also served as a capacity as a temporary battalion chief. He filled a huge void when we needed it. Kevin will be assigned to North Battalion on B shift, and pinning his badge tonight is his son, Kyle. Tonight, before you are the future leaders of our organization, they're going to carry the torch into the next few years as we start to look at our department changing over the next few years, and some of the more tenured members moving on to their next chapter, these folks are coming up to lead the department and serve the city with the utmost of confidence and competence, and I appreciate that. If it pleases the council, I'd like to get a group picture with them and the mayor.
For the audience, if the family wants to come up front and take pictures, please feel free.
Are we on our mark?
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations again to all our promoters, great job. Thanks for the family members for coming down, and all your colleagues in the back. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have several people signed up for audience comment. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Inez Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and Larry Warren, hello. First time I've seen you since I got back from law school, I think. Tonight, I have my underdog law report, and it centers around is the tail wagging the dog. Last week, I showed photographs of the DeWitt property, which gave the appearance of cronyism in the mayor's staff, allowing a developer to do what a citizen would not be allowed to do. Thanks to Terri Breyer for her email indicating that she was going to look into this. This is good, because just listening to us, but taking no action, doesn't really fulfill the potential that citizen comment can provide. What's bad about it is that Terri was actually in attendance at some hearings, and I guess she forgot. If a council member has amnesia about such an issue, then it's easy for the tail to wag the dog. The mayor's staff should be reacting to the direction from the council, not operating, as I call it, a shadow government, where they're implementing their own initiatives. Hence, this is why I'm saying, is the tail wagging the dog here? Events surrounding the DeWitt building permit place a cloud over how fair and unbiased the mayor's staff is when dealing with developers as opposed to individual citizens. Imagine forcing a citizen to pay for a sidewalk in front of the lot next to his as a condition for his obtaining a building permit. It strikes me as misuse of authority by the mayor's staff, frankly. If the mayor's staff is going to decide that citizens should pay for public sidewalks, which I think is wrong in the first place, payment of those sidewalks ought to come from the adjoining property owner, not the poor guy down the street who's trying to build his own home. To allow DeWitt to dig a huge foundation pit right up to within three feet of his property line, place Santa cans on the public sidewalk, and then actually enclose the public sidewalk in a cyclone fence, thus forcing parents and children to walk in the road in order to go to Kennydale Elementary or to the park down the street, well, it got my attention, frankly. The fact that the DeWitt debacle has taken place without council member Breyers remembering anything about it points out the need to reinforce the council's direction, which the administrative staff should be following, not forging its own. If council member Breyer should report that everything DeWitt did was lawful, well then the Renton Municipal Code needs to be revised. The council taking charge will lend greatly to the image of transparency which the council seeks to foster, and not just as an image, but an actuality that gives value to the majority and provides fairness regardless of how much money a building permit is going to generate for the city. With Mayor Law indicating that he's going to make sweeping changes to the code this year, the DeWitt debacle could not come at a better time. It highlights that the council has got to take charge. The problem of the tail wagging the dog was made even more relevant today with Mayor Law scheduling a meeting which probably should have been public, and any councilman interested should have been allowed to attend, but if it was that sensitive or that restrictive, then perhaps an executive session would have been the better venue. I hope the council will take seriously my comments about the tail wagging the dog, and take steps to take charge, thereby eliminating any possibility that citizens observe what is happening here and think we have a shadow government operated by the mayor's staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Warren?
Couple of comments. On the DeWitt property, and talking about Councilman Breyer, the question came before the Planning and Development Committee on an appeal by Mr. Brad Nicholson, and the date of the committee reports, February 11th, 2002. Now, if Councilman Breyer forgot something that happened in 2002, I'm sure we all could have some sympathy for her, because the Planning and Development Committee is a very active committee of the city council. What also needs to be said is the city holds no title to the property over which the DeWitt sidewalk runs. My office investigated in July and August of 2011, and subsequently has been requested to look into this matter several times. When the plat was developed, the sidewalk was built on private property, and the city never received a deed to, or right-of-way deed to, that property that the sidewalk was built over. So presently, that sidewalk is built on private property, and from correspondence that I've read, Mr. DeWitt was advised by his attorney, which I probably would advise a client in a similar situation, to occasionally block off access to that sidewalk to make sure that his private property rights can be maintained. Now, the city is trying to work with Mr. DeWitt now to try and get the necessary right-of-way conveyance to that property so that this question will be cleared up. But right now, the city does not hold title, and Mr. DeWitt is within his rights. Secondly, on the mayor's meeting today, this was not a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. There was never a quorum of the council present. The mayor can conduct meetings that are not open meetings, just like various council members may conduct meetings. The suggestion that there be an executive session would have simply eliminated all involvement by the public, and the purpose of the meeting was for the mayor to receive various suggestions from the general public and the business community about what could be done to further the city's business atmosphere, so it would have destroyed the very purpose of the meeting. Those are the comments that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Vincent, did you have anything to add, or did... Okay, thank you. Next is Paul Willett.
Hi, Paul Willett from Renton. Good evening. First, I have two short subjects that I'd like to address today, and I hope I'll do it in five minutes. First, I want to thank council members and the mayor for invitation to attend the retreat. It was very informative, and I appreciate being hosted at the meeting and stuff, and very informative. In fact, it goes right along with what I want to comment about tonight, and that's the issue of information to the public, information to the citizens, and how sometimes we feel like we're behind the light bulb because we don't get notice of what's happening and so on. To me, it was very informative to listen to Chip and all the developments that were addressed and that were presented. It was almost like a report card, however. I saw very little concern or discussion relative to individual projects and their impact on the city and the transportation in the city. I saw a lot of discussion relative to the location of marijuana projects, in fact, locating one in my backyard and all that.
That's right.
Because I, by the way, for all the people who don't know, I happen to live in a place where it's white, and I can actually have a marijuana retail store. I can grow the stuff. Anyway, to be on a more serious subject tonight, I want to talk about the Southport project, okay? Since I, as I mentioned before, I go walking down Crewland Park every morning, and so I was very interested in what was being planned for Southport, okay? And so, I took a special interest in the project, especially Phase 1 is supposed to be a hotel, and Phase 2 has three huge towers. I was appalled. So I took the liberty of driving down that little speed bump road next to the apartments, and going down to where there's the big posted sign of what the project is all about. But guess what? You have to drive all the way down there to see it. Why isn't it located someplace outside, near the entrance, where people can see what's going to happen? I was appalled, because this is really going to impact the traffic tremendously, and my access to Liberty Park, okay? Now, I heard Mr. Zinnman talk about a traffic study. He called it a mini-traffic study of the intersection. I proposed to you that when I was working as a construction manager, and we had to locate post offices and stuff, we were required to perform traffic studies that impacted the entire area, not just the local area. And so, I am concerned that this traffic study should incorporate or include the impact on Logan, the impact on Park Avenue, and what's going to happen. Are we going to build it on to get there, or is it going to become just like the waterfront in Bellevue? You can't get to it over there on Main Street because of the developments, okay? And my concern is that it's a beautiful park right now, because you can get to it, but I'm not too sure that's going to happen in the future. So, it's not a criticism. My concern is that God would give you the wisdom to do intelligent observations. I know you're probably stuck with the zoning that was approved many times ago, however, if you can impact my building shed, my backyard, surely you can address the issue there of those three towers. Maybe you can minimize the impact here. The other quick subject, by the way, I want to comment about, and again, it's a matter of public information. I read in the reporter about Grace Christian School being proposed for the old city hall. My first impression was, that's wonderful. My youngest daughter went there to that school. If I could have a couple more minutes, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. After thinking about it, I asked myself, what's going to happen to the traffic from Third Avenue? Because I've heard many of the council people talk about the concern of Third Avenue is a through street. You know, people don't stop in Renton, they just keep driving through. But if you put a school there, are you going to put in a 15-mile or 20-mile zone? Are you going to put in cameras like you did at the high school? What's going to happen to the traffic? I was concerned there about what's happened to Liberty Park. Liberty Park going to become a school playground? I'm not against it at all, but I would hope that you would really consider the impact of the area around it when you do approve it, okay? You've got the fire station there, you've got taverns and tattoo parlors within a thousand yards. It's still a school. It's not an office building, remember that. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in the Renton Highlands. Probably already know what I'm going to be talking about, but I'll talk about it. We need affordable housing, we need it all over town. The city budget doesn't have any money to build affordable housing. The Renton Housing Authority is right at their edge, just trying as hard as they can to provide housing for the people on the very bottom, and we're all in favor of that. We need to have better shelters for the homeless, we need to have facilities like the one downstairs, that the Center of Hope, which is expanding what it's able to do, they're doing wonderful things. Linda Smith is fabulous. And so, we have not only ladies who are in distress and running to find safety, which happens to be a great safe place, but other people have been able to come in and be able to use that space and the facilities that are there. So this is all positive. But there's a group of people that we're not taking very good care of as a city, and that is the working poor. They just call us spade a spade, a working poor, the people who work very, very hard, but the salaries are not high. And so, they're stressed on what they can live in. We aren't building any more affordable housing right now in the city, it's just not happening. And what we need to do is, with your cooperation and help, I think that the private sector can help to produce the housing. The government can't produce it, they don't have the money, it's also not the right format. The United States has been successful because we have business people do the business. The government helps encourage them and give them direction and guidance, but they don't try to do the business for them. If we try to build the houses, I know some of you have probably a building there, but if we try to build the houses with the government, it's not going to work, but with the cooperation and help, then we can do it. And so, I have sent you out data, and I'll be talking with various people, and I appreciate the responses that I've got. We do need to have some real concern taken care of, of having incentives and help and ways allowed so that the private business can build the housing. It's available, we can do it, and we can do it in the areas that need to be done. It's going to take some creativity, it's going to take some flexibility, it's going to take thought, and I certainly do not have all the answers at all, but I have some suggestions, and I'd like to work with those. Right now, I have guys that have invested a great deal of money in the Renton Highlands in the area that I'm most concerned about, which is the Sunset area. They've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into buying property. There's some barriers that can be mitigated and worked through, but it's going to take some putting some high priority on providing housing for the people who are in the working poor area, the people who need help, and we can do that if we work together. It's going to be a cooperative thing. So, I will be calling on you. I've called on some of you, I appreciate the positive responses I've had, but I'll be calling on you, getting the details down so we can make this go forward, so we can build the housing. In the Renton Highlands Sunset area, I'm mostly concerned about having homeownership. If we have homeownership, it's going to help stabilize our area, and it does wonderful things. I'd like to see the rate of homeownership increased throughout the city. I think that's wonderful, and I think we need to build more of it. Right now, our rents are going to go up for the people who are renting, because supply and demand, there isn't an increasing supply of buildings, there is an increasing supply of tenants. I have an apartment that just came vacant, I read on Craigslist, you cannot believe the amount of immediate reaction that came in, because there just isn't enough housing available. I could go through Greg Taylor, what we need to do is raise the income level for everybody in town. I was going to just say my own opinions, there are several areas that need to be taken care of to help the people on the bottom half of our income, and you are the people who can make the biggest difference. So, I'll be calling on you, I appreciate it, and in our spirit of cooperation, I believe we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Beth Asher?
Hello. Beth Asher, Renton. And tonight, I wanted to talk to you about stakeholders, because quite often we hear that the mayor and staff, or council members and staff, are going to have a meeting with stakeholders. And very often, it turns out that the stakeholders are people who don't live in the city, don't currently own property in the city, are just outside big-dollar developers. And I think that when a stakeholder meeting takes place, we need to realize that stakeholders are the citizens of Renton, the neighborhood associations that will be affected, the small business owners associations that will be affected by the development. For instance, the three tall towers proposed that Paul was talking about will greatly impact the neighborhood. In Seattle, you can sell the airspace above your house, your airspace is sellable, it is a commodity. Your view is a commodity. If we block access with such a development without letting people have a say in it, without encouraging the public to weigh in, then I think we're kind of asking for trouble and shooting ourselves in the foot. And I kind of agree with Inez, if there are developers involved, and we're afraid that maybe some particular pieces of property will escalate beyond all reason, then an executive session is a better forum, because I don't believe any council member who has an interest should be excluded from a meeting such as that. We're council members at large, if you're a council member, we're not districted, and so you can't just say, well, only this district will be affected, because all our council members are council members at large and represent all of the population. All the population, especially when the park is affected, will be involved in the end. And I remember, Mr. Person, you said that deliberately the park was designed not to have huge amounts of, you know, for instance, covered parking, because we didn't want just a glut and an influx into this park. But by the same token, we may have it anyway. If three huge towers go up, where do you think those people are going to go for recreation? And where will that surface traffic go? I think Paul made a really good point about the surface traffic impact. I don't believe a mini-traffic study with cameras, you know, just capturing certain streets where people go by and getting a ticker of license plates and seeing who comes off the freeway and who comes actually out of Renton is enough of a traffic study to cover the impact of what may happen there. So again, I would ask that you consider all your council members as stakeholders, and if it's not possible to make it an open public meeting, for instance, you do not want a quorum, then please, have an executive session and invite all council members. If the public can't be present, we need our representatives to be present. That is what you're there for. You're there to represent us, you're there to help us, and we would like for it to be possible for you to do that, as easy as it can be. Just make it possible for yourselves to do your job and represent us. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, we have four items for council consideration. Are there any items you'd like polled for discussion?
Seeing Mr. Mayor, move the consent agenda be adopted as read.
Second.
Then moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, the council adopt the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did meet in the Community Services Committee meeting regarding an appointment for the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board, but we decided to hold that in the committee until we get further information based on some concerns that we have received from the community members, and so we're going to hold that in the committee until a later time. time and take another look at it.
Okay.
And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
What about public safety?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. We do have a public safety report. I'm calling that one out for...
Public Safety Committee Report. Ordinance amending RMC 1-3-3 nuisance liens. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to amend definitions in RMC 1-3-3 and add language that will permit the city to attach liens to chronic nuisance premises as defined in City Code 5-5 in order to better facilitate nuisance prevention and enforcement. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be presented for first reading. This is signed by the committee vice chair and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor. I move that the Public Safety Committee Report be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Person. The council concur with the Public Safety Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one ordinance for first reading.
For first reading regards the chronic nuisance premises liens. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 1-3-3 of Chapter 3, remedies and penalties of Title I Administrative of City Code by clarifying the definitions of calls for service, chronic nuisance premises, and general public, and amending regulations regarding liens.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Taylor. I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The committee, the whole meeting for Monday, March 10th, is canceled, and the city council meeting for that, for next Monday, is canceled as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
On March 17th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., committee of the whole will meet in council chambers and talk about the parks donation policy. Forgot that.
Mr. ... Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe to cancel a regular council meeting would take a motion.
In that case, I move that the council meeting for next week be canceled.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, to cancel next week's council meeting, Monday, March 10th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Bonnie. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On March 13th, Planning Development Committee at 4:00 p.m., we'll be discussing three items. Amendment to the RMC 4-8-110.e.12.c, hearing examiner decision, second, docket number 10, and third, marijuana regulations. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Utility Committee will meet on March 17th. We will be discussing Tabit Hill Consultant Contract and Cascade Interceptor Contract Amendment 2. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee will be canceled on March 17th, and I'd also like to call out the Public Safety Committee meeting for Councilmember Corman, which will take place on March 17th from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And there'll be three items on that agenda. Number one, active shooter ballistic vest safety overview. Number two, alcohol, fuel, transport, and safety. And number three, apparatus purchase and fleet update. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, on behalf of Councilmember Briere, who's chair of the Finance Committee, I will announce that the Finance Committee is canceled for next Monday, March 10th, regularly scheduled at 5:00 p.m. And the Transportation Committee is canceled on March 13th, and that is all.
No.
Oops, do I have one more?
Yeah, Finance Committee on the 17th.
Oh, yeah. I forgot. On behalf of Councilmember Briere, on March 17th, the Finance Committee will meet from 3:30 to 4:30 with three items on the agenda. Vouchers, emerging issues in revenue streams, and contract with King County INET.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
Thank you.
You'll find out.
I will. We will.
All right, moving on to audience comment. Was there anybody who didn't get a chance to address the council? Okay, come on up, give your name for the record, and city of residence, you have five minutes.
I'm Dave Beeden. I live in Renton. Regarding this stakeholders' meeting issue, I'm all in favor of private meetings when they're appropriate. I don't know enough about government to know when it's appropriate, but I would hope that the committee of the whole gets a report on what transpired in that meeting and that the citizenry in turn finds out, because it's all for us, I hope. Thank you.
Inez?
Thanks for letting me append my comments. I wanted to let Mr. Warren know that I came to the sixth floor and I got the DeWitt files, and I compared the online map system to the drawings that were in his file, and it would appear that the property lines on the city's maps are drawn in by people, and maybe they're subject to error. But in looking at his drawings, it would appear that his sidewalk is not his personal property. So, I did check that out, for what it's worth. I didn't just speak without spending some time investigating. Thank you.
Good, thank you. The wish of the council.
Move adjourned.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. So we adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.